Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Commission meeting for June 21st, 2023. And we start with the roll call.
Commissioner Chan?
Present.
Commissioner Dill Negro?
Present.
Commissioner Quigg?
Present.
Vice Chair Wong?
Present.
Chair Davis?
Here. Agenda, pledge of allegiance is next, sorry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review, do we need to move anything around or anything? Are we good? Alrighty. We have one set of minutes from June 5th. Anybody have any corrections? A motion?
I am moved to accept the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you, Kathy.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Alan. Vote.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dill Negro?
I abstain, I was not here.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0 with Commissioner Dill Negro abstaining.
Thank you. Next up is Public Communications. This is time set aside for people wanting to address the Planning Commission on something in our purview but not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom?
I don't see any slips or speakers.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to the public hearing, which is on 888 Sequoia Avenue, a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow construction of a new two-story residence on a vacant lot in the single-family residential zoning district.
Hello, this is Alan. Yes. Good evening, good evening, Chair Davis and Planning Commissioners. I'm Nestor Guevar, Associate Planner here with the City of Millbrae, and I will be presenting the item, the public hearing item tonight. So the project address is at 888 Sequoia Avenue, and the project is a design review permit to allow a two-story residence on a vacant lot in the R1 Zone. This map here just shows the location of the project site. The red dot there shows the project site, it's in the Mills State neighborhood. A bit of background information on the project, it's located in the R1 Zone, the single-family residential zone. It's an interior vacant lot, it's just under 14,000 square feet, and the proposal is for a new two-story residence. This here just shows the existing site plan. As mentioned, it is a vacant lot. You'll notice some trees that are to be removed, that's because those are in the area that the new house would be constructed. This here is the proposed site plan. The two-story residence meets all the development standards, including the setbacks for the front, the sides, and the rear, the front yard landscaping requirement, and the rear open space requirement. This is the first-story floor plan. It includes one bedroom and one bathroom, one half bathroom, and an office, a living room, a family room, a dining room, and a kitchen, as well as the attached two-car garage. This is the proposed second-floor plan, excuse me. It includes three bedrooms, three bathrooms, a walk-in closet, and a loft area. All second-story setbacks are met as well, just like in the, as, just as the cases in the first story. This is the proposed front elevation. It's a ranch-style home with some contemporary design elements. It includes stucco on both the first and second story, stone veneer along the first story, shingle roofing, a wood garage door and a wood entrance door, both with glass features as well, and a guardrail on the, on what would be the right side here, on the, by the outdoor area, as well as two entry columns. This, excuse me, this is the proposed rear elevation, the proposed left-side elevation, and the proposed right-side elevation. This slide here shows a 3D rendering of what the project would look like. It just gives a better perspective of the colors and the materials that would be used. You'll notice the stone feature on the first story here, and it, how it doesn't continue on the right side of the building. That right side of the building is visible from the street because the neighboring use is the athletic fields for Mills High School. So the commission may want to consider recommending to continue that stone veneer on that right side of the building that's adjacent to the, to the Mills High Athletic Field. As part of the project packet, the applicant included an arborist report. The arborist report notes six oak trees that are existing towards the rear of the property. As, one of the recommendations of the arborist report was for all six of the trees to remain. They also, the arborists also recommended to include tree protection zones for the two trees that are closest to the construction of the, of the new proposed building. The recommendations also included only handwork to be, to be done within the TPC, the tree protection zone. In terms of neighbor response, the, the project applicant sent out neighbor notification forms to all the adjacent neighbors. Of the total of four that were sent out, two were returned in support of the project, one form was returned in opposition to the project, and the San Mateo Union High School District chose to not take a position. The homeowner at 901 Sequoia Avenue, who's just directly across the street, returned their form in opposition to the project. They noted that, or they mentioned concerns of loss of view of the Mills High School athletic fields. The homeowner also requested an increase to the setback of the proposed, of the proposed Staff notes that the proposed setback for 888 Sequoia exceeds that 20-foot minimum setback requirement for much of the, for most of the, of the front of the building, and by the front door, it actually exceeds it, even exceeds 30 feet from the front property line. Staff also notes that the Mills High School athletic field is not a protected view. In order to grant the design review permit, the Planning Commission must make the following findings. Number one, that the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Number two, that the project complies with all applicable development regulations. Number three, that the project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from principal rooms of a residence. And number four, that the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city, and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed to be erected. Staff finds that the Planning Commission can make all of these findings, as noted in the staff report and the resolution. And with that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission receive the presentation, review the project, consider the public testimony, and approve the design review permit, subject to the findings in the resolution in Attachment 1, and subject to the conditions of approval to allow the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence in the R1 residential zone. Staff is available for any questions, and both the project architect is available via Zoom, and the homeowner is available here in person as well.
Thank you. Can the architect speak to the project too? Are you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you Nestor for that great report, and good evening, Planning Commissioners. I've spent the last few months working with my clients Amy and Michael to work on this house, on this blank lot that they got to purchase in Millbrae, and pretty much they're very excited to get to move up here and live with their family in Millbrae. And, yeah, that's about it. If you guys have questions, I'm kind of more here for the technical side of the aspect of this project if you have more questions.
Can you describe the house a little to us? I mean, you've done a lot of work on it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we're, we designed a two-story kind of contemporary ranch-style house. It was kind of a difficult house to design because the lot was so narrow and based off setbacks, so it was just a little bit tricky. So, we did get to work on it quite a bit. Spent a lot of time on the site trying to make sure that we got it to fit to the site correctly because there's quite a bit of slope from the project left side to the project right side of the lot. So there was a lot of thought going into the actual placement of height elevations on the site, heights of the building to stay within the zoning and building requirements. Yeah, very fun project. Turned out to be a very beautiful house, I think.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for staff or the architect? Can I see your hand, Chris?
Yeah, I guess my first question's gonna be about what trees were, are planned to be removed in that front section where the house is. Are there oak trees there that are being removed or other trees?
No, I don't believe so. Maybe the architects can provide further detail, but you can actually see them in one of the slides that shows the existing photo. They look pretty, I guess, small in comparison to, to an oak tree.
That was in Attachment 6 in the arborist report?
It, it might, it might be there, yeah. I believe it is.
Can you guide onto the page that I should look at, that'd be helpful? See a tree?
This really focuses on tree 1 through 6, the oaks.
Yeah, I don't think it, it's mentioned in the staff, in the arborist report itself, but on slide number four, you, that one, you can, you can see the trees that are proposed to be removed.
Okay, so these look like recently planted, smaller variety?
Exactly.
Trees, these aren't established, long-term trees. And there's a proposal to plant one tree in lieu of the four that are coming out?
I'm sorry?
There is a plan to plant one tree in lieu of the four that are coming out?
There's a proposal to plant a tree in the front, to continue the streetscape, tree-line kind of street that's already present on Sequoia.
If we can continue this subject, you know, this is unique because it's a empty, unused lot, and it's being developed, so what are the requirements for maintaining the trees or keeping the trees, or is the recommendation from the arborist binding, or do they have flexibility to remove trees, add trees, et cetera?
In terms of the trees, I think the arborist report does, does recommend to keep all the existing oak trees in the rear, and from my understanding, the applicant is amenable to that recommendation. In terms of specific requirements with it being a vacant lot, there's nothing really that differentiates this as compared to a different interior lot that comes for a design review permit.
Meaning that, what, they mean, they're required to keep the trees or they can remove the trees?
Meaning in terms of, of development standards, it would be, it would be the same review.
You know, I'll add to that, condition number 16 in the conditions of approval, page 3, is a condition that states all landscaped areas must be maintained in the healthy and growing condition, including public parkways and street trees.
So it's a kind of, kind of a paradox because it's a native growth, the trees are wild, it's an unused lot, and in order to maintain them and improve a property, then what does that mean, maintain them? They don't have to be maintained in their natural state, but they can be trimmed, pruned, kept up to look more like, you know, that, how would you interpret that maintenance and upkeep?
Yeah, the maintenance would be maintaining the, the health of the tree, being the appearance of the tree. The homeowners are, will be required to, to maintain healthy, growing condition for the trees that are going to be remaining on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have questions? Kathy? Nope.
Nathan? Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, if you go back to that photo of the, that you had earlier showing the lot, so there's, there's like a, I guess there's a fence there to, I guess, restrict, to block off the fields from the sidewalk. I just quickly looked at the plans to just see like where, where the, where the field fence would stop, and I don't see, see that anymore, so presumably there's some interaction between that fence and the, the new development. Do you, do you know what's gonna happen there?
Just for clarification, do you mean the, the fence on the right with the adjacent athletic field?
Yeah, right, exactly. So, right now that fence goes all the way through the property also, presumably from when that was a city-owned property. So, where will that fence end, like, going forward?
The, the applicant will be required to work with the Public Works Department and school district. The fence, since it terminates at the property line of where the property, the seized property used to be, it'll be more than likely terminated at the property line of the, the other side.
Okay.
The east side of the property.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess, you know, one of the questions I have is the proximity to the playing field. People who hit balls over that section right towards this house, I see there's a lot of window casings on that side of the house. It does raise some concerns about conflict and impact over time between the two. There's no boundary being offered to put up between there, no hedge, no tree line between the field and the house?
I do not believe so, no.
Kathy?
The, can you hear me? Yeah. The applicant, or the, one that was returned in opposition to the project, you mentioned it briefly as you spoke, that you did speak with the applicant about the...
Yes, we reached out to the concerned neighbor across the street, explained that the setback is, is, exceeds the, the minimum, and that it, the view of the athletic field itself is not a protected view.
Yeah, and next time, I really couldn't read it?
Oh, alright, yeah.
Thank you.
Nathan? I'm sorry. Alan?
Yes, so, going to that, has there been any discussions between the neighbors to address the neighboring concern? I know that it meets all code requirements, but the staff does call out that it is largest house on the block square footage-wise, and I think that the thing that jumps out at me at the storyboard or the color palette is that the upper story is, is pretty massive and bulky. So has there been, I guess, question for the architect, has there been any discussion or thought about reducing the mass or the bulk of the building and the height? We're going right up to the maximum height limit of 30 feet, 29 plus some inches, almost near the top. So, has there been any consideration about designing to reduce the bulk or the mass or, you know, if it's the largest house on the block, doesn't have to look like the largest house on the block or the bulkiest house on the block. So just a question for the architect.
I, I think that the best way to answer that is to kind of go over the arborist zoning requirements for second story and the setbacks, and how the setbacks of the second floor from the first floor really does kind of get rid of that overall bulkiness and provides a softer feel from first to second floor. But regarding the largest, yes, we, we did, I would have to actually look, go back because I don't have this information right in front of me, but we did have one of the larger ones on the street. We did show that there were other houses in the neighborhood that were also somewhat large, but that was other streets, I believe, not Sequoia. But we kind of did go over this a little bit at the very beginning of design review with Nestor.
Also, in part, it's because of the heights of the ceiling, we're going up 10 feet on each floor. There's other options such as like recessed ceilings or reducing the roof slope on the second story to match, even to match the first-story slope. Any considerations given towards those options?
So the only reason for the slope and the size of the roof is so that we can fit a unit, heating and air conditioning unit in the attic because of the requirements for the size of that being 42 inches by 5 feet by 10 feet of attic space. So that was the reasoning for the slope and the tresses in there. I mean, obviously, there are ways to lower the building by having lower ceiling heights. The client really specifically wanted to have 10-foot ceiling heights, is kind of the near-contemporary thing that people are doing these days.
And can you talk about the grading? So you mentioned that there is a slope from the left to the right. I saw in the drawings, it's about eight feet difference in grade. So are you grading the lot to be what, the average height of the grade or matching the left side or right side or?
It's kind of more matching the left side. It does go down just a little bit, and mostly just to get to the garage entrance to fit on natural land, but it does go down a little bit there, and then it, we kind of raise the right side up.
Does that mean there's gonna be a retaining wall on the left side?
Very small on the left side. It's not really even a necessary one. I think it was like two feet, and then we were putting a fence on top of it. So nothing structurally retaining, or very, very strongly, the main retain wall would be on the right side, holding up the building.
Thank you. Any other questions? Chris?
Yeah, one thing I don't see in the packet is an alignment of windows between it and the neighbor next door. That was kind of a missing element that I always liked to see, and I'm rather concerned because there's a lot of window casings on this building.
Usually that's a requirement that we, or, or a material that we require when the next-door neighbor has concerns about privacy, and they didn't express any, I believe we actually had a, or we have, as part of the packet, a support letter from, from the neighbor next door.
Okay, well, still unfortunate. I think I would still always prefer to see it.
I would tend to think that should be mandatory, whether the neighbors are saying anything or not. Just for our visibility, that was one of my thoughts when I looked at it also.
In addition, there's a large hedge on that fence line. Those neighbors clearly are trying to get some privacy in those side windows, and those, those hedges are gonna have to come down because, yeah, on that side of the building. So, for me, that seems like a very big gap in knowledge of what's going on as far as privacy impacts on the neighbor next door. I'm not sure they're aware of how much privacy they're gonna lose. For me, I would always want to see the alignment no matter what, just be able to look through and say, hey, you know, the, the owner may not have caught this, but this is a reality of an impact that they should be aware of and have a chance to speak up here live in the meeting.
And privacy goes both ways too. You may not want to align your windows so someone else is looking right into your, you know, bedroom or kitchen or so forth also.
And to be clear, this does meet all the requirements as far as the percentage of windows in a house? I mean, there's a lot of windows.
It, it does meet all, all the requirements for, it meets all the development standards.
How, how far up on the, the level of allowed window casing is it? Is it near the top? I mean, it's just, maybe just, I'm not seeing it for what it is, but it looks very much near the top of what I would expect.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, there's nothing in the zoning code that addresses it, possibly in the building code, but it was not flagged in, in the review by the building department.
Obviously, energy efficiency is a problem when you get too many windows. So, it meets code, it meets code.
Yeah, and to give credence to this also, the other building is a little bit, it's not parallel, so it's a little offset at an angle, so we won't be looking perpendicularly into each house. But still, yeah, it should, it's a good recommendation to have them put that in drawings in the future.
Did you, Kathy? Yeah, I have one more question. I think it's appropriate now. When we look at this rendering, to me, it looks like the roofs are high, but when you look at the other one, it looks much lower. Is this to scale or is the other rendering to scale?
Just to clarify, do you, are you referring, by the other one, are you referring to the 3D rendering?
The colored one, the rendering that was in the packet, that's in color?
Sure.
It, it, it's much softer, it doesn't look so up, whereas this one looks different. So I was just...
Right, on plan five?
Which one is, which one is correct?
This attachment number five would be to scale.
I can explain that also.
These two?
So the 3D renderings are done from a perspective at five foot, six feet off the ground. So they're, a human's eye version is where those, the 3D color renderings are from. Now the 2D elevations that you're referring to that look like they have a bigger roof, that is just a straight-on view, so you're gonna see all of the heights of everything. Where the rendering, because of the perspective, you, at least the perspectives here and the heights, the roof looks more hidden. So it's kind of more of the reality of what it would look like versus how we draw it in 2D, if that makes sense.
Thank you, yeah.
Which one is the one that we're really gonna see when it's completed?
Well, it depends where you look at it from, but probably the rendering is more of what it's gonna look like, but if you're further away, like at the neighbor's house or, then, then it would look more like the, the non-colored rendering one, the 2D one, like if you're at the neighbor's second-floor balcony, because then you have a straight shot at it at a higher height, then it would look more like the 2D black and white. But if you're just walking down the street, that, that rendering is to scale, the color one of the front, so it would kind of look like that, or when you walk down streets and see two-story homes, lots of times the roof isn't as predominant as what it looks like on a plan.
The image he was referring to was the one with the color board?
The color board, yes.
Just the little, the little?
The front elevation.
The little one, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So which one is the most accurate? The one, this one?
No.
The other one?
The color one in the drawings.
Yeah.
Is it time to ask the, I guess, the homeowners, the question?
We can, yes.
Acceptable?
Sure.
I guess one thing I'd ask is, are you aware of what Mills High School plan is for that athletic field in their currently publicly available documents for teacher housing? They're planning on possibly putting their teacher housing right where that field is next to your home. Have you considered that on, on your build?
Could please step to the mic? Can you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Amy. My husband and my... He was here. Hi, I'm Amy. My husband... My husband, Michael, and my daughter Ava is here. So the question was if we are aware of the potential project in Millbrae High?
Yeah.
Actually, we are not aware of that. When we bid the project, the agent did not disclose that. So, but when we talked to him subsequently, he said that that project was not going to happen. Has the plan changed?
That is not correct. Well, I know they have not proceeded yet, but as far as we know publicly, it's still on the potential place where they're planning on putting a teacher housing, unless I am unaware of public disclosures. I know it's possible at this point, but it has not been excluded and it was their primary plan for a while. So I just want to, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, you've considered that in your long-term bid design, but you should research it maybe a little further before you build. I'm not sure where it stands and I am, of course, sharing what was publicly available within the last couple of years, but said unless somebody else knows if it's changed or not.
So it's been some time since they discussed the project explicitly, but I felt like the last time I saw anything about it, it was going to be on the southeast corner of the school property. Did that change from the last time?
They redid the fields on that end because they were planning on moving the baseball side to that other end of the school. So I don't know if they've changed it again. But last plans, I saw one as on the Park and Rec Commission, had the housing on the baseball field and they moved the baseball field over to the other side of the school where they just recently did a renovation of the field space.
I don't think we are the source of information for these people at all.
I guess.
Stop.
My point is.
If they have concerns, they should talk to the Sematell Union High School District and not listen to anything we've just said, because we are not the, we're not the source of that information.
My point is simply just go get more information before you invest everything.
So discussing what's.
Well, I appreciate that you're letting me know that now. I just wish that, because we bought this land from the city of Millbrae. If such project already in the mind, I think they should have disclosed that, right? Because it's a big investment for me. Now that you give me that information, I will have to find out more.
To be clear, it's not a City of Millbrae project. It would be the Sematell Union High School District. And as I said, I don't know what the current state is. I'm just saying get some more information before you put all your money in the investment for this building. That's what I'm asking, if you're aware of it.
Chair Davis, I think we should kind of focus more on the design review permit application and the merits of this project. We're not here to consider other projects that aren't for you tonight.
Sorry, anybody else have any other questions? Nathan?
Yeah, I got two more. So yeah, I was actually kind of, when the architect was talking about the difficulties of the site and how it was sloping down, I was actually kind of curious about that, like, like that when I went and saw the site, that was what I immediately thought of. Also, it seems like there's a retaining wall and you're going to move earth around to create a platform to build the house, but like, how are you making sure it's going to be stable and everything like that?
Yeah, so there's not as much grading as one might think because we're really using the lay of the land as much as possible, the fabric of the land. So we will be pulling a little bit of dirt from the front left portion of the garage area to the back right of the garage area to kind of get that level and down to create a garage. And then the rest will kind of be more on raised foundation with crawl space underneath and then retaining wall on the right side.
Oh, okay. So part of the, it's going to be hollow underneath?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct, yes. Yeah, there will be a crawl space underneath the house.
Okay, and my second question was, so staff brought up the continuing of the stone veneer on the side of the house facing the field. I just wanted to get a sense of like how reasonable a request that is, like compared to the total cost of the project as you're estimating it now, like if the planning commission were to ask for that, ask for that, like how much that would cost?
Yeah, I'm unfortunately unaware of construction costs, but I do know from other clients, when we put stone veneer wraps around houses, that's usually the first thing they take off for value engineering because it's quite expensive.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be the only concern would be the finances, like I think you were mentioning.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, a question for staff. If they are elevating the house on this east side, it's on a platform, then what would be the allowable fence height? Because the fence, if that platform, say, I don't know, four feet high and you have an eight-foot fence, then you're only coming up maybe four feet above the platform. So does that make sense to have a fence or allowable fence height higher? At first I was thinking if you have a stone veneer, it's going to be hidden by the fence. And now that I look at it, then you see it's elevated on a platform. So then the fence would only come up very small. It might look kind of odd.
So I believe the, they're proposing a guardrail on the, on that right side, east side of the property, basically above the retaining wall. And that's right where the, where the property line is, just about. So, and I think it's, the architects can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's three and a half feet or so.
Correct, 42 inch guardrail.
I don't think that's what he's asking. He's asking about the fence, if you have fence between neighbors, a normal fence between neighbors, so between the property and the Mills field, will there be a fence and how tall?
If there would be one, the maximum allowed would be from finished grade, six feet up.
So that might only be like below the guardrail then too?
Any other questions? Chris?
So the back of the property also faces towards the spur trail. Is there a plan to have an access point to the spur trail back there as far as some of the fence? Yes, that's lovely.
Yes, we plan to add fence and then have access, back access to the trail.
So that's lovely.
Any others?
I think that architect, I want to consider that if there is that platform with the railing that, you know, for privacy, might consider lowering the grade of the house so that you can allow a fence. Otherwise, you're being in full view, your side house in full view of the field and then especially if there's structures or neighbors in the future or a building there, then you would have barely any privacy at all because the fence coming from the grade would only extend maybe even below the railing there. So something to consider. And then also if you're able to lower the grade of the house, then it'll also reduce the bulk and the massing and then maybe look a little bit less imposing compared to the other homes in the neighborhood also, something to consider.
Yeah, but lowering the grades means that our house will be lower, right, than the street level.
Well, if you have, well, yeah, you may rethink that. Either your slope on the driveway or the driveway can come in further down the street so that, I don't know, something to think about, just pointing that out.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate that. But can we ask for an exception to increase the height of the fence then, if that's the case?
The fence on the east side?
Yeah, the school side.
You can, you can build up to six feet.
It can be, it can be higher than it's currently proposed, up to a maximum of six feet. If you want to go higher than six feet, then you would need a fence exception.
I believe you can also have a one and a half foot extension for a lattice above the fence also.
That's correct, yeah.
But that may still be around the height of the railing.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Next question would be that now I learned a little bit more about the Millbrae High School potential project. I'm really concerned. So if we were to go back and really change the design to protect whatever view we have in the future, in case they are going to build, well, first, I hope if the project will be approved by CDM Millbrae, it will protect the view of my house as well, right?
We can't answer any of these questions, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry that I brought it up. I just wanted to ask whether you were aware of those past plans.
So I need to go to Sematell School District to find out all this information?
Union High School District.
Okay.
And as, as Commissioner Chan said, they might have moved it to the other side of the school at this point, for all I know.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Also, we have no jurisdiction over the review of their.
Can we stop? It's not our job, please.
Okay.
Sorry, but. Time for public, public comment. Let me open that up. Do we have any speaker slips or anybody on Zoom?
I don't see anyone on Zoom. I don't see any hands up.
Thank you. Have a motion to close the public comment?
Make a motion to close the public comment?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg? Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Public comment is now closed.
Thank you. We have discussion? Chris?
Oh, I can start, sure, absolutely. The house looks lovely. The design, the structure of it, the types of sightings that you chose, I actually am not turned off by the mass. I think it's well done as far as enclosing the second story. I think it's a lovely design. I appreciated the preservation of the back six oak trees. Would like to see more than one tree planted in lieu of four coming down, of course. I think, you know, obviously, working with the, the school to make sure that there's not a pass-through between you and the, and the baseball field will be to the advantage of both you and the school, retain that sort of barrier fence that's there. Overall, I'm very happy with what I see here and I don't see any reason why I would object to the build at this point.
Thank you. Any else want to chime in? Kathy?
I too like the project, especially the one in the rendering. But anyway, I don't have anything negative to say at all. There was one question you were asking. When we approve this project, then it's approved. If you, I think, check with staff, but if you change something, then you have to come in and make the changes, right?
Staff?
If it's significant changes, that's correct, yeah. It would be brought back to the planning commission.
Right. Somebody else? Alan?
Yeah, I'm really excited for your family and I hope the project goes through. It's really exciting. Looks like it's going to be really a nice design and elevate the neighborhood. And there are some minor things that we point out here, but hopefully you work those through and then come to some solution acceptable to you and to the city. Just a little bit nitpicky details, like there are different perspectives from the different viewpoints. Obviously, when we do renderings, we want to show the nicest view, but you know, the other color board, it shows a different perspective that it does look a little bit bulky from a different perspective. And, you know, sometimes if you're able to make small tweaks, might be able to reduce that massing, have more symmetry, roof lines, like more parallel. Symmetry is always aesthetically appealing and beautiful. The windows, if they're similar heights below the windows to the roof line on the first floor, might be slight improvement too. But overall, wish you the best and I see no reason to move this forward.
Thank you. Nathan? All right, I have a motion then. Oh, come on, say something.
Really happy to see that you've invested in this community and want to come, come to Millbrae. I think we, you know, all of us are, serve on this commission because we love the city and want to do, want to make this a more welcoming community for families like yours. So we're really excited to, well, actually, we haven't voted yet, but, so how about I, I'll move that we approve the, what is this? Okay, the resolution of the planning commission to approve the design review permit for the construction of a two-story residence in the single-family R1 zoning district at 888 Sequoia Avenue?
Lovely.
I can second that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Before we vote, I just want to say the design is absolutely beautiful. It's a gorgeous home. I love everything about it. Can we vote? No? What, what, what? Oh, you can take us after.
Take a vote.
Take a vote.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Congratulations, there is a 10-day appeal period after this, okay? But congratulations and welcome to Millbrae.
I just want to thank all the commissioners for approving our plan. I want to thank Nestor for working with our architect, right, for the last several months. He has been really responsive with our questions and requests. And of course, I thank, want to thank my architect for doing such a great job in designing our house. We love it and we are really excited to be a part of the Millbrae community. I talked to many neighbors when I tried to get their consultation form. They are really, really nice and supportive of our project. And my daughter is excited to be close to her cousins. We have families live in the same neighborhood, so we are really excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. All righty, new business. It's the nomination and election of chair and vice chair for the fiscal year 2024. Do we have, how do we want to do this? Do you want to do vice chair or chair first?
Oh, I thought you'd do the chair first.
Whichever, I'm asking, does it?
Chair first.
Okay. Chair first. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Vice Chair Alan Wong to be our next leader as chair of the planning commission.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Can we vote?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. I accept the nomination.
Do we have a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Nathan Chan as the next vice chair of the planning commission.
Is there a second?
I would, I'm very grateful for the nomination of, well, Chair Wong. I do want to acknowledge that Commissioner Quigg has been on the commission for longer than me and was appointed the year before me. And so I have, I'll, I feel like I'll have plenty of time to eventually get into this, into the vice chair position. So I would like to move that we nominate Commissioner Quigg to be the vice chair.
Okay. Is there no second on Alan's? Okay, so that one is gone. Now we have a second motion. Is there a second on?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Now we can vote.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
I did want to make a comment though. I appreciate doing it again. I would have, well, I would have seen, but since you're new and you're great, you do a great job, but I think it might make sense for me to stand on the vice chair for one more year.
Yeah, okay, good. Roscoe?
Through the chair, thank you. The planning commission bylaw states that, that in addition to annually selecting the chair and vice chair, the June of each year, the chair and vice chair shall assume office at the first commission meeting of the new fiscal year. So this, the rotation will take officially effect the first meeting in July.
Right, yeah. So, okay, so.
Could you finish off?
So staff updates?
You know, I wanted to make one other comment. I want to thank Maureen for doing a great job as chair. We've had a lot of tough meetings and so many of them were still by Zoom and it's by Zoom, and it's always much more difficult to run the meetings via Zoom. So, thank you, Maureen. You did a great job.
You're welcome. Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Yeah, second that. I'd like to thank Chair Davis for all your efforts this past year. We had a lot of very important items that the Planning Commission reviewed, most notably the general plan and the specific plan. Those are very big items and--
Huge.
Very, very appreciative--
Oh, and a housing element, too.
And the housing element, yes.
Pages and pages.
So, thank you for your leadership over this past 12 months.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Very accomplished year.
Thank you.
I'd also acknowledge Maureen's leadership, keeping us on track, staying to the business and focus. Did a great job, and continuing to do your work on the Planning Commission, welcome that focus also to keep us on track.
Thank you. All right, good. Okay. Staff updates? Any?
Just a few updates. There was an email that's sent out to the commissioners about potential training, so just if you're interested, please let Carmen know and respond, and she can sign you up for that training. We did also receive additional correspondence related to the last Planning Commission meeting on the general plan, CIP conformance. That was distributed later. The cutoff date, just for everyone's information, is 5:00 p.m. the close of business that day. If we receive it after that, it doesn't, it doesn't get distributed. So, but we will do the best we can to distribute it if we receive it. There's just no guarantee. So, that's a standard protocol. That's also, that's also the city clerk and city council maintains. And then the next Planning Commission meeting scheduled for July 3rd will be canceled, so we won't have a meeting happy 4th of July to everyone, and we'll proceed with July 17th.
Thank you. Announcements?
No, I had a question actually on what Nestor said about the comment, email comment. So, just where should the public be sent, if they're interested in contacting via email? What email address should they be using?
They could use the planning email or Carmen's email. We check both, so whatever's convenient.
Is, can you say the planning's email?
Yes, planning@ci.milbury.ca.us. We also have Carmen's email, which is C--
Soulette. Soulette, S-O-U-L-E-T-T-E.
At ci.milbury.ca.us.
Thank you. All righty, and then announcements? Kathy?
I think we should include the window placements on the next door. I wish you would encourage the people, don't wait for someone to request it. Is that something that we can do?
Yeah, we can do that moving forward. Make it a standard requirement.
Whenever there's two houses, it would be great to have that for us.
Yeah, we'll just have it on every single--
Yeah, thank you.
--residential.
Any other comments or announcements?
I believe is this Commissioner Del Negro's last?
Well, if we have a 17th meeting, that would be my last. I retired after the 17th meeting.
The next one?
Yes.
So, he'll still be with us?
We delay the 17th meeting. This will be the last.
Don't cancel it.
Hopefully, we still have--
We do have--
You have a project.
Have we advertised for another commissioner?
Yes. Yes, we're currently recruiting.
I mean, it just seems like every time I think everything is all calm and everything is good, and then all of a sudden, somebody else leaves.
Yeah, we are currently recruiting for that vacancy, so anybody that's at home, you're watching, if you're interested to participate or to be in the Planning Commission, there are applications.
Good. Thank you. There are no staff updates on the two big projects, the El Rancho or the Office Depot?
No updates. Last update was that they're under building permit application review, and that's still the case. We spoke with the developer for 959 El Camino Real, the Office Depot, today. They reiterated their goal is to begin construction this year. So, there is, they do, are still moving forward, apparently.
I did have one other one. It was not something that we did, because it's some of the ones that you approve in-house. I think it was 130 and 140 on El Camino Real, and they just painted that building, and so I thought, what's happening with it? I mean, it just seemed odd to me that the office building was just repainted if they're thinking of tearing it down and building. That's the one that was kind of in the--
It's the B-35 project?
With the, yeah, it was one that you had approved, I think. And then it was in, where the parking lot for high-speed rail is supposed to be. And I don't know if that came up, or if they decided not to go forward, or--
So, that application technically is incomplete. They did submit an application. We were going through the review process and identified a few items that still need to be addressed. That project, we deemed it incomplete, and the next step would be that the applicant would need to resubmit the application documents and forms. We haven't, it has been incomplete, I believe, since April, March or April, springtime. So, we haven't made formal action yet.
It looks nice, painted, I'll tell you.
There's also one other planning question. There's been talk, latest news article, San Mateo Daily Journal, San Mateo County scopes hotel purchase.
Sorry, no.
The question is for staff is, will there be code compliance review or design review for this project that meets--
We can't, if, don't even answer the question. There is no project. We're not just going to discuss anything tonight. I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, it's, like the chair said, it's hard to say what, it's--
You can't talk about something that's not--
We don't have any application. We don't know what the scope is. It's just very speculative at this point.
Any updates on the science projects, the science park projects?
They're also in the building permit application review at this point, and, you know, there's a lot of moving parts, especially with the Alexandria project, but they're, they're still actively submitting and addressing comments.
It looks great, going up fast, so--
Way fast.
They're not, they're moving.
Yeah. I thought it was faster than Millbury Station went up, the structure at least.
Well, the outside's always fast. The framing is always fast, it's the other part.
Any announcements? We got Beats and Brews on July 4th, earlier than normal, right? Isn't it like 11 o'clock?
Yeah.
Anything else about it?
I saw an advertisement for it coming off of the 280 North, right on the off-ramp. Kind of cool to see some detail up there to the Millbury community about events going on.
A little reminder.
As you come off the 280 on Millbury exit, going north, there's a little island at the top of Millbury Avenue.
Oh.
Nice little advertisement there. I'd say keep doing that.
They had Beats and Brews, I think, advertised on that electronics sign, too.
Probably did, yeah. Millbury things appear on that.
Was there, did you go?
Anything else? All righty, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Happy 4th of July.